Lord, just want to thank you for this day. Thank you for every day that you allow us to have. I just ask that you watch over our citizens. Please keep them safe and embrace with your love. Have us all to humble ourselves in all the blessings that are bestowed upon us every day. And Lord, please be with this board. Please keep us focused and let us do your works that will glorify your name. Amen.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. First item is the approval of your agenda, and you'll note that I passed out a late addition. This item came in even too late for the bullpen procedure, but it is allowable. This being your meeting, it's allowable for the board to add this to the agenda, and we would suggest addition to the consent agenda of approval of a grant application request and a resolution for the FY 18 Virginia Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security Grant Program for a patrol boat for Lake Anna. This opportunity was just learned about yesterday, and the grant's submittal deadline will be passed prior to your next meeting, so we need your authorization today to apply for an $82,892 grant for the purchase of a 21-and-a-half-foot patrol boat for which there is no local match. And with that addition, I would ask the approval of your agenda.
Do we need to have a motion to have that added? All right.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to add the grant for the $82,000 for the patrol boat?
Motion to add a grant.
All right. Motion by Mr. Marshall. All the question. Mine disappeared. Did I get? Are we trying this again, or what are we doing? All right, roll call vote. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair's eye. That's so much easier. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Dr. Trampy to approve the agenda. Do you want to read the whole agenda? Mr. Taylor?
This is just to go ahead and set the agenda after the addition, so.
All right. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair's eye.
Brings us to public presentations. Nikki, has anyone signed up for public presentations?
Yes, there are.
Okay. The guidelines for public presentations are as follows. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters you believe that deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up for each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet and please print clearly for our record. Come to the lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name and voting district for our record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or speaking on behalf of a recognized group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. Public presentations shall not be used to address matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Your written comments are always welcomed by the Board of Supervisors, and you will note the lights on the podium. Green means go. Yellow means you have 30 seconds to sum up, and when the red light comes on, the microphone will be turned off. Nikki, who is up first?
Russell Mueller, followed by Michelle Boer.
Russ Mueller, Livingston District, is a person who served public service for 40 years. On the hill, I know that government officials are subject to hearing the concerns of constituents, sometimes criticism, but too often, too little praise. So I think it's time to do some of that latter. I think it's time to thank the board for taking the initiative to listen to the concerns of the citizens with regard to the 6,350-acre proposed solar fields that are going to be on our doorsteps here. And we thank you for taking an interest and learning more about it, as I've spoken to several of you individually. Thank you for going on site visits to learn more how you can actually mitigate problems so they aren't transferred to Spotsylvania County. And we thank you for proposing to hire an engineering firm, an independent firm, to be able to better assess exactly what it is before you, which is one heck of a large construction project. We're talking about 1,000 Walmarts, or maybe 2,000. It's construction that you have to look at here. Now, we also thank you for considering any amendments that you might make to the county code that would be more protective of citizens during the long-term process as well. Now, as a respondent to the SCC in the S-Power case, I did agree to a delay to July 12 because for the hearing, which was to be tomorrow, because the firm said they will have a new site plan by mid-June, as early as June 6. But I'm not going to hold my breath with regard to whether or not they've finally done due diligence. I didn't find any of that in the original site plan. There was absolutely no, and I mean no, recognition of where this was going to be placed, in Spotsylvania County, in Virginia, in our soils, on our lands, in a previously forested area. It's not flat. There's 300 and 400-foot relief.
Mr. Mueller, your time is up, sir.
It's the second person signed up. It looks like either Michelle O'Beare or Michael.
Michael.
Mike Bear.
My name is Michael O'Beare, 11201 Chancery Meadows Lane. I read statements from the studies. They want to put studies on Fallin Lake roads for visuals. Nobody's ever mentioned the visual impact on Chancery Meadows Lane, where the solar field backs right up through the road. There's no mention of it at all by S-Power or anybody else that's concerned. S-Power has also told me that they've been talking about bringing water to the facility from the county water supply on the backside of Fallin Lake. I just wanted, you know, if that's coming from Gordon Road Reservoir, everybody knows how low that gets during the summertime when we have no water at all. This spring has been absolutely ridiculous. I'd like to have in writing from S-Power or construction superintendents that any impact on property lines, property values, wells, foundations, or otherwise, be in writing that who's going to pay for them, because we've already put it out. Every money wants to have this livelihood there, and now it's going to be destroyed by this solar field. The buffer system needs to be in place before construction is started. That way, the visual impact of the solar field and construction is not a hazard or impacted to taxpayers that are joining it. Like I say, air road is direct contact with it. There's seven houses in it, and nobody has ever addressed any of us of what is going to be as far as the setbacks. Nobody has said what the buffer's going to be, or anything from S-Power. Nobody from S-Power has ever contacted any of us. My property lines were surveyed in 1975, again, 1981, when I purchased it, again, in 2006, when I subdivided it. When it was surveyed in 2014, the back corner property stake, which is original from 1975, as far as I know, probably before that, which was an iron axle, was pulled out of the ground and moved, thrown up in the woods, replaced with a piece of 5/8 rebar. I had it resurveyed four weeks ago. The rebar was moved five foot in on my property line, and if it happened to me, how many others that are joining this solar field or project that it has to? Thank you.
Ernie Booth, followed by Joanne Booth.
Ms. Booth, earnest, 11223 Chancellor Meadows Lane. My concern is on original plans from last year, on Site A with construction entrance for S-Power is on a private road. Chancellor Meadows Lane is a private road, and it concerns me and the others on that lane, is why that was approved through the county. And I've talked with S-Power, Daniel Amenahan. He's assured me twice that nobody else would be on that lane, and that the plan will be revised, but I've yet to see revised plan. And I want insurance that that lane would not be used for construction. It's not a state road. It's maintained by all the homeowners on that lane, and we're very upset about this. And as far as the water supply, we're concerned about how well's going dry. The initial water usage for this S-Power plan is 746 acres of water. That's a lot of water. But we are concerned about our wells, and what will the county do when our wells go dry? Thank you.
Joanne Booth, followed by Judith Ginnally.
Okay, my name is Joanne Booth, and I'm at 11223 Chancellor Meadows Lane in Locust Grove. And my concern, of course, we had no clue that this project was going to impact upon us so greatly. We do wonder how much the, one of the families who sold the land that literally from my doorstep to the end of the property lines, about 100 feet. We wonder how much misrepresentation was done regarding where the property lines stand, the fact that it might be a public easement, et cetera. All of us have our plots. We, in the back of our particular tax map, 1727, is the Norton Prom, which we were told when we purchased the land, that that so, only so much tree removal could be done for where we put our house because of the Chesapeake Bay Water Preservation Act. So now that we see that the land has been sold and there has been some timbering in preparation, we have had such runoff change. We don't even have solar panels up there yet, but the incredible amount of water, simply because there's no trees to hold us back, that is flowing. We've already had to do some landscaping redesign to keep this going to our foundation, and then we have this huge amount of water going down the side of our house, lots of foam included, rolling gas can. My husband even had a picture of that, ending up down towards that access to the Norton Prom, which ends up in the Po, the Ponai, the Mataponai, and the Chesapeake. So we are concerned about that. Mr. O'Beare is our neighbor and already spoke to his concerns. I am concerned about in the preparation process with containment, water containment, runoff control, and all this. How are we going to monitor, like, the mosquito population? How are we going to protect the citizens in the controlled burn? We've had so many straight westerly winds that if anything gets out of control, we could have a brush fire. And we personally know what it's like to have an unexpected brush fire, because that happened about 22 years ago in our backyard. So it's very frightening. I am concerned about the manpower to just control all this. I had my desk upstairs in the Health Department for 14 years. I'm aware of what manpower is. I was Rappahannock Area Health District, and upstairs, and for 14 years until 2009. And I just wonder, like, are we really knowing the full impact?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Judith Ginnally, followed by John Buckley.
Okay, Judy Janelle, Livingston District. And what I have to say applies to the S-Power facility as well as any subsequent solar facilities in the county. And I think the county must require the following for solar farms. Solar panels must have high wind protection and must be designed to withstand 110 mile-an-hour winds. The solar units must have anchoring systems as well as a flexible racking system. And this is from the, I got this information from the Puerto Rico aftermath meetings that they had. They said the hospital in Puerto Rico had this, and their solar units were not damaged after the hurricane. And the flexible system has a give-and-take for the winds. It's able to be purchased and applied to solar facilities. So, next item, must have a lightning-related protection system due to the conductivity of solar array fields. You must be able to prevent vector-borne diseases. Therefore, you must prevent standing water in retention ponds, drainage ditches, low-standing areas, and areas with ruts. All mosquitoes needed is one inch of water to breed. You must be able to treat the area with pesticides every five to seven days to prevent the growth of mosquitoes, flies, and ticks. Personnel must also be on-site 24 hours a day for any site that generates electrical power, so that alarms are sounded and protocols are started for incidents and disasters. There must be established protocols and standard operating procedures for any possible type of disaster. These protocols and procedures must be approved by the county. This is what I recommend for that. And there must not be a controlled burn due to smoke inhalation issues. And I was able to get a publication, Fire Engineering, and I copied the article for you that goes into much more detail about what smoke inhalation does to the body. Thank you.
John Buckley, followed by Abby Buckley.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Buckley, and I'm from the Cortlandt District. According to the Spotsylvania County website, the Social Services Board is tasked to assist the Director of Social Services in an advisory capacity with the planning and development of programs and services providing public assistance to persons in need of the community. Well, as part of the community, I need that public assistance in getting my son Juan Antonio home. In addition, the board is made up of seven members appointed by election district, four-year terms not to exceed two consecutive terms, in addition to an expired term according to Virginia Section Code 63.2 Tag 305. It's interesting that the battlefield district has no one appointed, but I'm sure the supervisor cares about children as much as anyone does, and I'm sure he will be appointing one after this meeting. In my research, other Virginia counties as well as other states, the Social Services Board has the authority to provide oversight of the local DSS process and procedures, as well as recommending policy changes, including hiring and firing the local DSS director. My question is, do the Social Services Board members know that the Spotsylvania DSS is playing God? Who ensures vital services offered by DSS continue to be managed and allocated as efficiently and effectively as possible? Is the Social Services Meeting Board, according to their charter, to confirm my previous statement? One DSS-related issue that is happening in our state that can happen here in Spotsylvania is that the Virginia Department of Social Services Board launched an investigation late last year to the beleaguered Rock Bridge Social Services Board, which is happening right now. With that said, you have the responsibility, as the Board of Supervisors, to make sure that your appointees on the Spotsylvania Social Services Board are doing their job and meeting regularly to ask the tough questions and to make sure that DSS is not playing God with their power, our money, and our children. Anyways, the day and time of meetings, according to the Spotsylvania County website, fourth Wednesday of every other month, beginning in February at 9:00 a.m. Additional meetings may be called by the Social Services Board. So with that said, I am requesting from the Board of Supervisors to motion that an additional meeting be called by the Social Services Board members. Berkeley's Pamela Lake Pell, Chancellor's Catherine Dennis, Cortland's Nicole Flush, V. Hill's Patrick J. Crowley, Livingston's Greg Benton, Salem's Michelle Trampy, and Battle's appointee to be named after this meeting to look specifically into our case, which may uncover other cases that have been mishandled. I know for a fact from researching and talking to former and current foster families and biological.
Sir, your time has expired. Thank you.
Abby Buckley, followed by Britten Brenner.
Hi, I'm Abby Buckley. I'm one of John and Alma's kids from the Cortlandt District. You've heard our story several times by now, so I just want to say that the reason I'm here today is just simply to remind you all of the injustice that has happened to my family and really just turned our lives upside down. The Spotsylvania Department of Social Services has not just really taken Juan Antonio from us. They've emotionally traumatized every single member of my family, and we've all had to cope and deal with Juan being taken from us in our own way. I still remember when Juan was first taken from us, that my little brothers and sisters would always ask, you know, "Where's Juan?" And "When's he going to come home?" And it's been almost two years, and they're still asking us that same question. We're all still asking a lot of the same questions. And the only explanation I have for why my family hasn't just completely given up or lost hope is that God has been with us every step of the way, as well as our awesome church family and friends. A lot of them are sitting right behind me. And if you all can do anything, absolutely anything at all, we would appreciate it so much. It would mean the world to us. We just want Juan Antonio back home with us. And one last thing I just want to mention is that I know that DSS has helped countless kids. I mean, that's what they do. They help people, but they're also not a perfect system. They can make mistakes, and I believe this is one of those mistakes. Thank you for your time.
Britten Brenner, followed by Jeff Walson Lager.
Hello, my name is Britten Brennan. You guys already heard me speak a few weeks ago, but again, I'm from Stafford County, Virginia. I'm currently a Marine Officer stationed in Quantico, Virginia. And again, I'm just here on behalf of the Buckleys, and I just want to keep on applying pressure on the wound, so to speak. I just really want this to be at the forefront of y'all's mind, and I know that there's other members of the church family here who are here to speak as well. And we do plan on just to keep coming, not to, you know, present anything new in any way, but just to, again, just keep it at the forefront of your mind of just this great injustice that's going on. And something that I'd just like to point out is, you know, the rest of the Buckleys aren't here tonight because they're at a showcase for Aaron, who's one of the kids. And I know that Captain Buckley and Abby would love to be there right now, seeing him perform, but instead, because of the care that they have for Juan Antonio, they chose to be here. And so, again, just another thing, like I said before, about it's the opposite of what's being said about them. It's the exact opposite of negligence. They are here because they care about Juan Antonio and because they want him back. And again, I just want you guys to keep on thinking about that. Thank you.
Jeff Walson Lager, followed by Jen Walson Lager.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Walsh Lager. I'm from Stafford County. I'm here tonight as one more voice, standing in support of the Buckley family and advocate for the return of their son, Juan Antonio. My goal is to remind you that something has gone wrong in the Buckley case and to remind you that the wrong has not yet been rectified. I have concluded personally that the Buckleys have done nothing to forfeit their natural right as parents, and if you take a closer look, I'm confident you'll reach the same conclusion. There's a very real concern at this point, though, that the Buckleys will not even be given an opportunity to work toward reunification with their son. To terminate the Buckley's parental rights would be the wrong outcome, a terribly wrong outcome. I'm not here to vent frustration, and I don't want my comments viewed in that light. To that end, I'm willing to give the Department of Social Services the benefit of the doubt. I'm willing to stipulate that DSS was attempting to fulfill their responsibilities to the best of their ability when they first took Juan Antonio. They very well may have felt a moral responsibility in light of the limited facts available to them at the time. However, the important part of that statement is they had limited facts. So let's agree that DSS tried to do the best they could, but it is clear now that they misjudged the situation. They misjudged the situation, but they have not changed their course in response to that now-clear misjudgment. Their mistaken judgment was clearly fleshed out in the criminal case. Their mistaken judgment has been clearly understood by those who know and stand with the Buckleys. If someone wants to justify Social Services' initial decision, I would disagree, but I could begin to understand. What I can't understand is holding on to that initial misjudgment today. Today, there is a mountain of evidence in favor of the Buckleys. Today, there are more than enough facts to decide to work toward reunification. However, DSS appears to be unwilling to reevaluate their initial conclusion. That cannot be allowed to stand unchallenged. Too much time has already passed. The Buckleys have demonstrated their fitness as parents. They have raised and are raising eight well-adjusted children. Short of immediate reunification, the Buckleys should at least be given a chance to follow a specific and clear plan with reunification as its unambiguous goal. Your help is needed. Thank you.
Jen Walson Lager, followed by Richard Bertsong.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Walsh Lager from Stafford County, Virginia. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I'm echoing the same thing that my husband just said. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. This situation is fundamentally about parental rights, the natural right of parents to make decisions they feel are best for their children. John and Alma Buckley were taking their son, Juan Antonio's, medical situation very seriously. They were looking for the best treatment they could find that was in accordance with their beliefs. Alma was more diligent than anyone I know with carrying those things out. She's a fastidious person who is committed to raising educated, healthy, well-adjusted children. They're polite. The Buckleys were following a specific course of action for their youngest of nine children, and part of that course of action included taking him to the hospital. Spotsylvania DSS chose to remove Juan Antonio from his parents' care during a critical time. He was a sick baby. The Buckleys willingly took him for help to Walter Reed Medical Center. I can understand, given the nature of Juan's illness, that DSS might have thought something had gone terribly wrong. I saw Juan. I've held him. I knew him, and he looked bad. He was sick. Those people were there to help. But just as my husband said, upon learning all the facts, I'm still shocked that they have not reevaluated their situation and looked very closely at the facts, realizing that while they may not agree with every choice the Buckleys have ever made, the point of disagreement does not give people the right to then take your child from you. That's what's at the core of this situation. Why have they pushed the criminal trial out and the civil trial out so far, ensuring that Juan would be in foster care for the full 22 months? That October 5 civil trial date is not an accident. If we're going to live in a nation that is going to say the point of disagreement is when people can take our children, that's not the America I've always known and loved, and I'm quite sure it's not the America most of you have known and loved. I think people are starting to get afraid to point that out, but everybody thinks they're right. Everybody thinks their view is just as, you know, equivalent with God's essentially until someone disagrees with them, and then we realize- until someone disagrees with them, and then we realize, right, we all have the right to raise our children. This family was doing all they could for their son before they could even try what Walter Reed wanted, their son was taken from them, and I think that's something a lot of people need to realize. They willingly took them, took Juan to the hospital. DSS took him. The safety plan that they were asked to sign, they weren't given the time that DSS told them they could. Something I'd like to point out before my time is up is that last meeting Gail Crooks mentioned oversight of the DSS, and it seems that every path she mentioned is internally overseen. Every review is handled by the DSS. Where is the external oversight for this powerful organization? I don't know that there is any genuine external oversight, but why is it that community members are spending countless hours writing things, talking to people, just to get outside people to look at this situation? Somebody has to be able to help. Thank you.
Richard Birdsong, followed by Johnny Bryan.
Good evening, my name is Ricardo Birdsong, and I'm a captain in the United States Navy, like John Buckley, and I presently reside in Fairfax County, Virginia. And I'm up here today addressing you all because I've known John for over 30 years. And I've known Alma, well, I said, my wife and I have known Alma for nearly 25 years. My wife, Sonia, she's a social worker by trade, but she changed her career, now she's an elementary special ed teacher. But when she was a social worker, I was horrified by some of the stories that she would tell me with kids coming, that she had to place in foster care. I'm talking about kids that were sexually abused, kids that are physically abused, kids who are neglected by parents, and I just cannot believe that John and Alma would fall within that group of people. John and Alma, as a matter of fact, John and Alma, they have a, they're caring, Christian home, loving kids, which is the exact type of home and environment that my wife would have loved to send kids to. And I would, I would, I also wanted to let you know how much, I'm not just saying this because they're my friends, I've actually had to do this, leave my kids with John and Alma. You see, I deployed to Iraq, and while I was gone, you know, I had three young kids, and my wife had to go to the grocery store, had to go to hospitals, had to do all kinds of things, and John and Alma, they were the ones who she dropped them off to leave them with, to watch our kids. My precious kids, the things that I care most about in life, I entrusted to John and Alma, and I knew that they would be just fine. So the thing that I just wanted to talk to you about is, I just can't believe that something this terrible has happened for John and Alma, because they are the exact kind of people who have the kind of home that kids should be given to. And I thank you all for this opportunity for me to address you, and I, my hope and my prayer is that you can do anything and everything as possible to right a wrong. Thank you.
Johnny Bryan, followed by Ken Gross.
My name's Johnny Bryan. I'm out of King George County, former deputy of Stafford County Sheriff's Office. If I believed, had any doubt in my mind that John and Alma did something wrong with their children, I wouldn't be out here to speak on their behalf. I've dealt with some child abuse cases and seen some parents who, in my opinion, are just unfit to be parents. That's not the category that John and Alma fall in. I have known them for the past couple of years, had a chance to interact with all their kids, with a youth program at the church I attend with them. There is no doubt in my mind that the kids that they have love them with their whole heart. There's no signs that John and Alma treat them or abuse them in any way, and I wouldn't see that having another kid would make that any different than with their other kids. There's, there's nothing like having your kid taken away. I can't speak from experience, but I have one of my own, and if she was taken away from me, I couldn't tell you how much that would affect me. They have eight other kids who, I mean, it's been said, they've grown up fine, they're perfectly healthy, perfectly happy. To say that, again, that just one of their kids has been neglected is, would be outside the realm of possibility for me. So I would ask the Board to be able to reevaluate this case and have the second chance given to John and Alma to reunite with their son. It has to be a tough thing to be looking from the outside in, watching your own grow up, and you not being 100% involved in that life. So again, I would ask you guys to resubmit and reevaluate this case. Thank you for the opportunity to come out here and talk. Appreciate you all.
Ken Gross, followed by Irvin Boils.
Good evening, thank you for letting me have a bit of time to speak on behalf of John and Alma Buckley. My name is Ken Gross. I'm a native of South Carolina, where I'm a member of the bar, but I relocated to Commonwealth of Virginia 20 years ago, and I consider this home. I live in Stafford County, where we moved, we came to this area in the course of my 28 years as a special agent in federal law enforcement, where I now work in a legal counsel role. And because of my employment there, I'm also a statutory conservator of the peace in Virginia. My wife Joanna and I have been blessed with eight children in our 28 years of marriage, and we're also certified foster parents for RAFT, the Rappahannock Area Foster Family Team. I have lost count of the number of foster children my wife and I have cared for over the years, which has been our privilege to open our home, which we believe is our responsibility to help, and we want to teach our children that it's their duty to care for their fellow My wife and I are members with John and Alma Buckley of Temple Baptist in this area. We've been privileged to observe them at length in church. I'm in John's Sunday School class, and we have had them, blessed to have them in our home and their children. My wife Joanna and I know of no finer parents, and I would hold them up as examples that I would seek to emulate in raising my children. I know that two weeks ago, you previously had several citizens speak here to the Board in pertaining the case of the Buckleys. I actually wanted to be here two weeks ago, and I've watched those presentations on YouTube, and I echo everything that was said at that time. I credit John Buckley and his daughter for being able to speak about this without becoming choked up, because it's very hard for me, knowing the facts of their case. In the length and breadth of my nearly 30 years of federal service, I cannot think of another case of the egregious misuse of government power than the case of Juan Antonio and his parents, John and Alma Buckley. Their plight cries for the exercise of oversight and inquiry from the Board of Supervisors. I urge this Board to give attention to their repeated presentations that have been made to this Board about their case. The bottom line would appear to be that DSS has set a standard of perfection in child health, where any outcome in health which is less than 100% reflects a parental failure, and we all know that cannot be the case. Thank you very much.
Irvin Boils.
Evening, I'm Irvin Boils, from Livingston's District. I want to reiterate my skepticism that I stated at the local hearing of the SCC, that the necessary due diligence by the independent expert needs to be performed on the inevitable and high likelihood of the proposed solar farm will incur direct or indirect lightning strikes. Solar photovoltaic farms installed in an open area without high buildings or trees are subjected to high solar radiation and air humidity, and would have increased risk of being hit by lightning, and no lightning protection devices or surge protection plans are proposed. S-Power downplays the dangerous, danger is associated with release of leakage of cadmium and cadmium compounds such as cadmium telluride or other materials known to be carcinogens due to the breakage of solar panels from lightning. They don't account for the effects of lightning-induced overvoltages in the circuits that cause insulation breakdown at the edges of photovoltaic modules, which can release these toxic materials into the ground and runoffs, or the subsequent damage done by the DC current generated by the array to the inverters and the other connections into the power station itself. Furthermore, there isn't an emergency action plan for addressing monitoring, inspection, containment, and cleanup of any catastrophic events that can cause toxic or other forms of these pollutants into this ecosystem. S-Power apparently doesn't feel the need for this, as inferred from their statements like the one in their white paper that says, "The risk of cadmium exposure in the environment, particularly surface water and groundwater, is highly unlikely due to the insolubility of cadmium telluride." I'm not comfortable with this having, not having the due diligence by experts to verify this claim, and not having an emergency action plan in place in the event that it does happen. Thank you very much.
Marsha Stevens.
Good evening, Chairman Benton, the Board members, Mark Taylor. I'm Marsha Stevens, and I'm in the, I have a house in the Battlefield District. I'm here tonight to show my support for the Buckley family and request this case is looked into further. I've had interactions with the Buckleys over the past several years, and their children attend, or our children, attend a local dance studio in the area, as well as attending birthday parties at the Buckley's residence, and in addition to attending church together. I would see Ms. Buckley care for Juan Antonio as a very gentle and caring mother. She was feeding him for long periods of time, because he could only take small dosages at a time, and was constantly holding him and tending to his needs. In February, I was able to attend each of the three days of the trial being held in Spotsylvania Circuit Court against the Buckleys. Mr. Benton, I heard you speak and questioned about subjectivity. It was very subjectivity presented by DSS workers in that courtroom that day. Very few facts were presented. Thus, the judge resulted in his verdict. It was very clear to myself and my husband, sitting in that courtroom, of all the subjectivity hearing. On the third day of the trial, my husband and I arrived late that day to the court due to a prior commitment. As we were entering the building and going up to the stairs, DSS workers were heading out quickly, with a look of dismay on their face. My husband looked at me and he said, "They dismissed this case against the Buckleys." We could tell just by their facial expressions. Unfortunately, Juan Antonio is still not with his parents. His parents have eight other children that have been in their care and are very deeply cared for and excellent care. The case has me baffled. I see DSS has taken advantage of a little one being sick in the early phase of his life and being taken away from his family. I know personally of a case in Spotsylvania DSS where the parents are on drugs. The kids have been turned back over to the parents and live in a hotel. They were taken away again, but they were given a chance, and they are still on drugs. They have visitation rights, more than what the Buckleys have been given. I also wanted to bring up on the DSS presentation that was presented to the Board of Supervisors a couple of weeks ago about the compliance level checks. I asked that you remind yourself and read the November Independent Audit Report, where there are compliance issues in DSS. Not necessarily CPS ones, but compliance issues. They are repeat findings. You will find them in the report the year before. I will close with that I hope that you continue to seek ways in this case, as I have observed this child being taken care of as brother, and all the other eight children also. I hope that they will be given this chance to have another opportunity with their child as well. DSS can support the ones that need to be taken. Thank you.
That's all, I have to sign up.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak that did not sign up?
Good evening, Kirsten Talkins-Balding with the National Park Service at Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania National Military Park. I apologize for not making the sign up. Just wanted to speak to the Board to let you all know that we have a keen interest in what's happening with the solar plans and the potential developments in the area. We look forward to continue to working with the county and talking about best practices, some things that may come up for you all. We have an extraordinary amount of experience with it across the nation, and should you want to work with the National Park Service to describe some of the things that might be best practices for you all, especially as you're looking at the comp plan and potential amendments to it, we'd be very happy to work with you. Have a couple of suggestions for you, should you want to have those at any point in time. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak at this time? Close public presentations.
Brings us to the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman. We have the floor computer, please. The consent agenda for this evening, gentlemen, is as follows. Item one is the approval of minutes for the April 24th, 2018 Board Meeting. Second is the approval of a contract with JL Kenton Sons Incorporated for the Pump Station 43 and 16 Abandonment Project with a low bid cost of $197,035. Item three is the approval of a purchase order to U.S. Digital Incorporated for the Fire Station Alerting System replacement at a cost of $1,141,298. Item four is the approval of a purchase order to Miracle Recreation Equipment Company for Patriot Park Playground Equipment at a low bid cost of $198,700. Item five is the approval of Spotsylvania County Guidelines for the Public Private Transportation Act. Item six is a business tangible property tax refund being paid to Chick-fil-A Inc., Fredericksburg Store Number 730, in the amount of $3,274.66. Item seven is a business tangible property tax refund to SBC Tower Holdings LLC for Item eight is a business tangible property tax refund to SAI Dental Associates Inc., trading as Gentle Touch Family and Cosmetic Dentistry, the amount of $9,651.77. Item nine is a business tangible property tax refund to Deepak Katar, DDCPC, trading as Fredericksburg Pediatric Dentistry in the amount of $7,578.69. Item 10 is a business tangible property tax refund to Spotsylvania Emergie Center Inc., trading as Spotsylvania Emergie Center, the amount of $8,978.88. Item 11 is the approval of the Esri Enterprise License Agreement, which is $300,000, $100,000 increments for a three-year license. Item 12 is a Pamunkey Broadband Working Committee Recommended Appointment of Information Services Director Jane Reeve to work with the Pamunkey Broadband Working Committee. And the added item, added at the beginning of your meeting, is the approval of the grant application request and resolution for the FY18 Virginia Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security Grant Program for a patrol boat for Lake Anna. And again, this is just approving an application for an $82,892 grant to secure a 21.5-foot patrol boat to replace a sheriff's boat that's on Lake Anna, and there is no local match for that grant. That is your consent agenda.
Does any Board- Does any board member want any of these removed before?
Let's pull 13.
All right, we'll pull 13. And I'd like to go ahead and pull 3. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda outside of 3 and 13? Mr. Yakubowski's motion to approve, minus 3 and 13. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
And Chair's aye. Marshall, you want to do yours first?
Yeah, I just, I have nothing against the grant application, but I know this, we're, it's a short timeframe, and that the Sheriff's Department, if we could get a letter from the board showing support for this project, for this, for the purchase of this boat, it would really help with the grant selection process. If we could add that to this, make, I'd like to make a motion that we add, that we write a letter in support of this project.
Mr. Taylor, is that doable by, I think tomorrow, by 12 o'clock?
Do you authorize me to sign it on behalf of the board, or if you'll be in the office in the morning, sir? Happy to.
Forgot about that part.
Happy to sign it on behalf of the board at your direction.
That'd be fine with me. Any other discussion for the board on, we've got some more?
Great idea.
I think you have the majority nodding in agreement with that, or do we need a motion?
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, number 13, by Mr. Marshall. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair aye. I guess, number three. Chief, I'll be looking at you on the.
The components for this system should be able to be transferred from an old station to a new station.
All right. Now, we, in this system, are they, are we able to, say, is it, yeah, I'll spit this out eventually, is it able to differentiate the EMS calls, fire calls, combination calls?
It will differentiate them actually down to the unit.
Oh, wow.
So you can essentially customize which rooms, different locations throughout the building will receive alerts for which units. You're very well, that the battalion chiefs often have to listen out for multiple stations, multiple units throughout the county. So the control module, that would be essentially for their bunk area, they would be able to program them and all of those units to be able to hear any time a unit that they're responsible for goes out the doors, being dispatched.
All right. Is this one that is individualized for the, for their units? So if I'm on 6-1 as AMS, I'm only getting that?
Yep.
And if you're, how about if you're staffing 2, where 6-1, 6-2?
You could essentially set it to alert from anywhere from one unit to every unit in the county.
All right.
So anywhere in that spectrum, simultaneous alerting for all units. So the current process, for those that you haven't been exposed to it, there is a two-tone system that's alerted for every single station in the county, which kind of prolongs the dispatch process. This would provide simultaneous immediate dispatch notification of the type of call, the units going, the location, and would also display that on a digital screen. So there's no question of trying to hear over the radio what the location of the type of call is, so.
And this is, we're going to do away with that tone, toning system?
Yes.
All right, thank God.
No more heart attack bells and buzzers in the stations.
Well, I'm too late to enjoy not having that, but, no, that's all I got for you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any, any other comments from the board or questions? All right, I just wanted, main ones, making sure they, we could get them over to a new station if needed, and no additional costs. All right. In that cost, is, did we include that for the new station if, whenever that comes about? Did we put in some funds?
That would be included in the cost of the actual station.
Okay.
So it would be viewed as a building, one of the building components, one of the systems in the station.
All right. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
And I'll make a motion to approve number 3. Mr. Yakubowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
Chair aye.
Brings us to board reports, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Yakubowski.
Thank you. Just one thing, want to point out, our Soapbox Derby that was held this past Sunday at 8:00 AM at the racetrack was able to attend. Mr. Taylor gave a very, very nice welcoming speech to all of the attendees. There were 69 cars that had signed up, and the racetrack put on a great event. Also, would like to thank our tourism staff. Debbie Ayler did a fine job. I saw her running around in an incredibly bright shirt, so you couldn't miss her. And all of it takes a lot, or events like this take a lot of manpower and a lot of behind-the-scenes work from many, many people. And so I think that this is the beginning of a very good event for the county, and I would encourage everybody next year, when it comes up, to attend and to just see, I think, I would estimate 300 to 400 people were there for that event. And so that was pretty good on such short notice on a Sunday morning at 8:00 AM. So thank you to everybody, and look forward to a good relationship and a nice event for years to come. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin.
No report.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank everybody that came out to speak on behalf of the Buckley family tonight. I wanted to share that I've met with John and Alma Buckley several times, and I think, Mr. Benton, you may have. They were Berkeley constituents and then moved to Cortland over the past year, I believe. And I want to thank John and Alma for their, really their Christian witness and testimony to me personally, because I see what's happened to them and know what's happened to them. And I've looked at their story, and every time I've met with them, they show nothing but peace and love and grace and no anger. And, and I know that if one of my children was taken, I would not be anywhere near behaving the way that they behave, and my hat's off to you for that. I'm not limited to three minutes, and I wasn't planning on saying anything tonight, but I would like to review a couple of things that are all public knowledge, and that is that in February of this year, John and Alma Buckley had their criminal case heard. I wasn't there. I wish I would have been there to hear the two and 1/2 days that the prosecution presented a case against them. It's a lot of prosecution. And I really wish I could get the transcript of what Judge Ricardo Regal said before he dismissed the case before one witness testified on the defenses on John and Alma's behalf. They didn't even need to. The judge threw it out, this case, where their son's gone. A couple of other facts, just for the public, is that Juan Antonio Buckley was born on the 11th of February to John and Alma. John is an active-duty Navy captain. Alma homeschools their other eight children. At the time of the birth of Juan Antonio, the ages of the other children were 3, 4, 6, 7, 13, 15, 19, 20, and none of those other children were deemed or even thought of being removed from their family. They, they're still there. They've been there. They've been waiting for their brother to come back. I understand, I've seen pictures that Juan wasn't doing well. I know that currently, he still sees several doctors. Well, he's in foster care. He's two years old. I know that Juan Antonio was hospitalized in UVA because he was having issues as a child, eating and growing from the 30th of June to the 18th of July, and was discharged without a diagnosis. This isn't a family that doesn't care about their kid. This is a family that's seeking medical attention and has him, and I'm sure that there wasn't a night that Juan was by himself at Charlottesville. I know that near August, there was a DSS case brought against them, August 1st, from a pediatrician who was no longer the Buckley's pediatrician. I know they were underneath medical care the entire time, although sometimes perhaps removed, and sometimes perhaps over the phone or through Skype. But I know on one August or shortly after that, our own county came out and looked at Juan Antonio and closed out the case. It was closed. Nothing was found. And then my understanding is, in December, the Buckleys took Juan Antonio back to Walter Reed at that time for some surgery, and had signed off on the surgery, and were actually told that they needed to sign a parental plan, but I don't believe there were any issues with giving permission to doctors to do surgery or put in pick lines or, or other kind of medical procedures. But they were, then the baby was taken the very next day before they had a chance to even sign a parental plan. And I understand, I know DSS, Gail, I know you're out here, I know you're trying to do the right thing, and I do appreciate everything you do. I know that we heard two weeks ago that aggravated neglect has only happened five times, I think, since 2015, and we heard tonight, some speakers talked about people that use drugs that have had second chances and got more visitation than John and Alma have with Juan Antonio. Skipping down here, I'm sorry. I also believe that the Buckleys were advised, through legal advice, to not have their civil case heard until the criminal case was heard. I think the civil case was originally set then for March of this year, when their criminal case was heard in February, and I believe our own DSS moved that back to October due to not having the doctor. And I, so I'd ask a couple of things here. The other thing I am surprised about, I'm surprised about two things. I'm surprised when DSS takes a child away from their family, for whatever reason, and my understanding from the last time we heard from DSS two weeks ago, was that it requires a super, one of five supervisors to sign off on. I'm very surprised that there's no reconciliation meeting once, once a week, once every two weeks, where the five supervisors get together and they discuss why a child was removed. So they have just a little bit of insight within themselves, and hopefully, I'm sure there's standardized documentation, but standardized in execution of when children are being removed from their families. For whatever reason that might be, I think it would help in standardizing and making sure that each one of those five supervisors is making the right call when that happens. I've also been surprised that there's no ability to have local oversight over the removal of children, and nobody gets it right 100% of the time. I don't care who you are, we've all made mistakes, right? We all, from time to time, business, personal life, we all make mistakes from time to time, and it's good to have somebody else to be able, it's accountability, right? We all, hopefully, we all like to be accountable for our actions, and we want to be held accountable for our actions. But what I've been surprised about with DSS is, there's no local accountability. It doesn't matter if you have a TSSCI clearance and can be accountable for national security secrets. Nobody can get in and read, this is what I've been told legally, locally, the only chance we have of appealing is either to the Virginia Regional Director of DSS or the Commissioner of Virginia DSS, which this board had, you know, a resolution. We've sent a letter to Duke Storm to review that case. But I'm really surprised, and this would be something I'd take up with the General Assembly, that there's no ability to have even a second look at it inside the House, other than what's already internal. I'm really surprised, I've learned that, and I'm kind of shocked about it. So I'd ask for a couple of things. One is, although I fully understand that by law, with an aggravated circumstances charge, it does not require DSS to look at a reunification plan with the family, but I would ask that our DSS would work with the Buckley family for a reunification plan, lay out what needs to be done, lay out what they need to do that they may not have already done, however extreme that might be. I would ask that we would at least consider doing that. I would also ask that, Gail, that you would relook at the reasons DSS took Juan Antonio in the first place. It's 14 months later, maybe 15 months now. Maybe those reasons that the county took Juan Antonio back in December of 2016 no longer apply. I don't know, but I would ask you to look at that, and if they don't apply any longer, I would ask, as we learned two weeks ago, that DSS can initiate the redaction of the civil case they have against the Buckleys, and I would ask that you would consider that. And then the last thing I, I would ask, I'd like to make a motion that indeed, each member of this board has an appointee on the Social Services Board, and that we would either request, if we can request, or authorize, if we need to authorize, that the Social Services, Spotsylvania County Social Services Board would hold a special meeting to look into the Juan Antonio Buckley case to the greatest extent allowed by law. That's a motion that I'm making right now, and open to discussion.
Do you have a discussion? Mr. Skinner.
I understand what's, that losing a child or being taken away is not good for any family. There's no doubt about it. But I do believe that we have a process in place, and over the history of what we've seen in this county, DSS has done a very good job, okay? And I, I feel very sorry for the Buckley family, there's no doubt about it. But I don't think it's our job to, to, to take that process and question it just because there is a case out there. What my big concern is, is the Privacy Act has played an awful big role in this thing. If it wasn't for the Privacy Act, we may know more about this incident than we do today. And I, I understand that there's a lot of people out there, but I, I think the Privacy Act is something very important for all of us. And I, I don't want to question that, because I've looked at all the DSS matters, and I think it'd be the wrong way for this board to go. I think right now, we need to leave it in the process. We, as a board, have asked somebody to review it, okay? I think that's all right. I really do feel that way. But when there's a Privacy Act that does not allow all the information to come out, I'd be saying, okay, I'm going to do it, but I don't know the whole story, folks, to be honest with you. And I'm not, I'm sure what they're saying is completely true, but there may be other things out there that nobody knows about, and we'll never know about it because of the Privacy Act, and I cannot support that.
Mr. Ross.
I completely understand where you're coming from, and believe me, I'm not trying to usurp or take anything away from the process. I would say that in two and 1/2 days of criminal case prosecution, probably everything that's protected by Privacy Act came out. I'm not saying that we violate any Privacy Act here. My motion is, the last part of it was to the greatest extent allowed by law. So I'm not asking that we violate Privacy Act with this motion if the Social Services Board looks at the case, but the greatest extent allowed by law. And if that means they can't see things because of the Privacy Act, that's, that's, that's the way it is. My motion still stands, but please know that that's the last part of it. I'm not asking anybody to violate the law. I'm not putting down DSS, Gail. Again, I know you do a great job. I know that, you know, you're dealing with a lot of hard cases in Spotsylvania County, and you're doing a great job at it. In this specific case, I think there's more to the story. And so again, all I'm asking for is, the motion is, for our Social Services Board, to the greatest extent of the law, have a special meeting to look into the Juan Antonio Buckley case. Sure.
And Mr. Ross, I, what you're saying is what we've done. I believe that is what has been done. The county has taken and looked into it. It's, I don't know what more can be said by the Buckley family on people and form, okay? And we did have Gail come up here and give us every bit of information that legally she could give us, okay? And again, I, I think, number one, I think our county has, has done a great job in DSS, numerous. I mean, one of the largest ones, and we deal with all the different localities in the area, and I do not think that would be appropriate. I don't know what more we can expect to get out of it. If Gail has given us everything that we legally can have from the Privacy Act, and that the Buckleys has given us everything they know about it, that they feel comfortable giving to us, I really don't know where else we can go for it. We have to trust the system and let the system work out, and the system hasn't completely been completed yet.
Any other comment? Mr. Yakubowski.
Thank you. Mr. Ross had asked if we're...
Mr. Ross had asked if we're able to ask the Advisory Committee to do, to look into this, to call a special meeting, to have oversight into it. Number, my first question is, can we do that? And then, number two, if social services side of the story is protected by the Privacy Act, as Mr. Skinner has continually said, then what will a review of this case by the Advisory Committee look like if they cannot have certain parts of the story, if those parts of the story are protected by the Privacy Act?
Mr. Yakubowski, the board can certainly ask, you know, for whatever it wants, but to hit on your second point, the Advisory Board is just that, it advises with respect to policy. It doesn't have any appellate review where it could look into the facts of the case any different than you all. The Department of Social Services is limited to what they can share with the DSS Advisory Board, similarly to them being limited to what they could share with you all. So it's not an appellate review of the specifics of a case, that still lies with the courts, with the courts of Spotsylvania. But certainly, the board can ask, but you're right, that DSS will be limited as to, you know, what they can do with respect to any individual case, and they're not authorized to review any individual case, it's really just an advisory with respect to the policies.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLoughlin.
So I just want to make a quick comment on this, because, you know, one of the speakers had a great comment, an egregious misuse of government power. And that's a concern we should all have. You know, I'm a government employee, and I've seen, we make mistakes, people make mistakes, and I don't know whether a mistake's been made or not, but when I've heard hundreds of speakers, it seems like, at this point, we're all telling what a great family, and they still have eight children at home, so it's hard for me to believe that you neglect one child and care greatly for the other eight, so I have a problem with that. So I guess a couple of questions, I got to go. Why is the hearing so far until October? Have we done anything to accelerate the hearing? Is there anything, have we looked at potentially transferring this case to another jurisdiction? Because there's obviously some kind of conflict. And then, yeah, I lost my train of thought, but, you know, what have we done? And have we done the right things? Have we, as the county, attempted to reunify the family? Because I've heard through a few different times that that is the goal, to put these families back together, even, I think even before these court cases. So have we done everything that we are supposed to do? So Mark, I'm asking you, because Gail works for you, have we done everything that we could do or should do? Whether right or wrong, have we done the right thing? So that's what I'm asking you to, just come back to the board if you could. Okay, thanks.
Certainly. Anybody else?
I'll just say a couple of things.
Go ahead, Mr. Yakubowski.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just will reiterate that I will vote against it, because asking the Advisory Board to look at this will accomplish very little, because they're not privy, they're not an appellate review board, as Carl has said. So they won't be able to look at the case, they will be able to look at the parts that they're allowed to look at, and they're an Advisory Board. There is a process, there is a regional review board, and there is a state review board. And again, this is a state agency. And so, the harshness on my tone is not any lack of concern for the case or the child, it is the process and how we are stepping around what has already been set up and putting forward proposals that honestly will not accomplish what I know everybody wants to accomplish. If there was an appellate board that we can ask, can you review it? This is certainly not the one. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner? I'd like to make the comment, Mark, being the county administrator, I do not think that he is privileged to confidentiality messages or information like that, and so you can answer that or not, but I don't, and I don't think you're going to get any more information than we would have got out of Gail at that point, as the county administrator.
That's exactly right, Mr. Skinner, there are limitations to the information that I have access to in my role. That said, I do believe I can fairly pursue and generate an answer to Mr. McLoughlin's question about, has the department done what it can do?
Mr. Ross?
I would just add that, Carl, are you proof positive that Social Services Boards are limited in that factor, or would you like some time to research that? And, go ahead.
That's my understanding. I rely upon some others in our office that have actually done the Department of Social Services work, so they're confident, so I'm confident in that, but I can always take a look and reaffirm that.
Thank you, I would appreciate if you did, and then I would just add that what harm can it do? We're not asking for any law to be violated or broken, we're just asking for somebody else to take some time to look at the case.
And just to make it clear, as I mentioned earlier, the board can certainly request, I don't have any issue with the motion, it was only a statement with respect to what the DSS Board can actually do.
Well, I'll just make a quick comment, since I'm on the Social Services Advisory Board. Yeah, we do, mostly it's policy-driven, and I'll tell you what, bulk of our time, at least towards fall and budget time, is trying to decide where we give money as far as various organizations that we, that support our communities. Yeah, United Way and some of those groups and the like, and Powerhouse, all those, I mean, that's what we do. We sit down and we thoroughly go through what citizens they serve in Spotsylvania County. And I'm not sure that, Mr. Ross, I'd love to support it, but I can't. I think it's going to be about like a grand jury, you know, it's, you're hearing one side. We're still not going to, you know, hear probably evidence that the Buckleys would certainly want to be presented, you know, for a grand jury. It's the officer going in and speaking to a panel of individuals and giving the law enforcement side. There is no, I mean, it's, I don't even know why we have it. It's, I guess, another step in the process, they say, but to me, it's definitely one-sided. I think if we want to pursue anything, we should, and Mr. Cole, I'll turn towards you, but I think at the local level, it certainly wouldn't be a bad idea to have some sort of oversight panel that would be able to look at things from DSS if and when complaints on a child being taken were brought. It'd be nice to be able to have that heard at a local level before it moved up to, you know, the head of the entire agency, whom I'm sure he's going to appoint somebody to overlook, to look at it anyway. You know, we have John McGuire, he was in foster care for a while before his grandparents took custody, so he has a little insight there, and he may be a good one to reach out to Bobby Orrick, we could also get ahold of, or maybe the three of y'all could work in concert if that's, you know, if it's in your, as far as what's been presented here and through us and maybe other citizens concerned about this, maybe y'all could actually work together in trying to come up with a plan or something we can do on a local level before it moved to the very top. That's all. So we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Ross to have the Social Services Advisory Board, I guess briefed by Ms. Crooks, as much as possible for the review of the Buckley case. Mr. Yakubowski? Or, yep. Sorry. Ms. McLoughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
No.
Mr. Marshall?
No.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's name. Is that the interview? Mr. Skinner, you have a board report? Mr. Marshall?
Just real quick, Mr. Yakubowski already hit on it, I'd like to thank everybody that participated in the Soapbox Derby. We had a, I don't know if Mr. Yakubowski got them all or not, but a big thank you to Economic Tourism Department and their staff, Dominion Raceway, the participants, and we had several local businesses and citizens that made donations, I'm sorry, donations and sponsorships of the cars and different things that make this happen, was, seemed to be a pretty successful event. I'm glad that we could make it happen, a lot of hard work from our tourism and economic development department went into this, and I must thank everybody for doing that.
Dr. Trampy?
No report. Go ahead and spit this one out to the board. We have an invitation by Ms. Grant, the chairman of the school board, to do a joint board on the 29th of this month, next Tuesday, or the 15th of June. I know the 15th of June does not work for me. I've heard from Mr. Skinner, Mr. Marshall, Dr. Trampy, and Mr. Yakubowski. I think the 29th is okay with all them. I guess we just need to make a decision on whether we're going to do this. I would like to, and I will admit, before I go any further, I did drop the ball on Ms. Grant's invitation. Number one, I did not think it was part of what the discussions were as far as the budget. I thought this was an addition, but no excuse. I totally forgot about it once it was sent, I got involved with a bunch of other stuff and the solar farm visits and everything else, and I totally forgot about it till recently. And I've spoken to Dr. Baker, Mr. Braswell several times, and Ms. Grant, and they would like to do the, well, Ms. Grant would like to do the special session for us. I think after, I'm willing to try it once, but I'd like to do it during regular sessions instead of all these, and I'm even willing to go to them, I don't, they'll take turns, I don't care, to make it fair. But we could certainly have more discussions, and that's what it's all about, is communication and trying to understand where each other's coming from. I want to be able to certainly bring up other topics other than just this money that was located that concerned me, and get some feedback, and like I say, I'm willing to try it, and see if we can make something positive out of it. So I just, I guess, hate to put you in the spotlight, but Mr. McLoughlin, Mr. Ross, are you willing to meet on the 29th, so we can, all right? That's a good question. Let's just, let's make it for here. I haven't gotten any information one way or the other on where they would want to meet, and I don't know if, is it too late? How much time do we have to advertise it and get it done?
Yeah, we have time to announce a special meeting for next week.
Can you get with Dr. Baker and just see if we could do it here this time? And see if they're accepting, or Ms., actually, Ms. Grant, and see if she's a...
Time being 6:00 PM, sir?
I think she said 5:30.
5:30.
PM. School board.
Mr. Chair, you may want to allow Mr. Taylor to see if he can actually get in touch with them tonight to get an idea as to where that might be. I mentioned that, just so you could, if you can do it tonight and set it tonight, there's a lot less administrative hurdles that Nikki has to go through about mailing agendas and doing all that stuff. If you all set the date, time, and place tonight versus doing that outside, there's just less administrative hurdles. She can certainly accomplish, but I just know it's a little bit less if you, see if you can reach out tonight and maybe do it by the end of the meeting.
Okay, I'll see what I can do. Mr. Skinner?
Can we just go ahead and, we accept at our place at 6:00 on the 29th?
Yeah, well, she'd mentioned 5:30, so.
Negative 5:30, that's pretty tough for guys coming down from Quantico.
Just do 6:00 then. 6:00, 29th, Tuesday, here.
Here at the board.
I think we're, is everybody in agreement? Do we need a motion, or do we need an odds?
Objection.
You need a motion to vote, please.
Motion to approve for the 6:00 meeting, a special meeting on the 6, at 6:00 PM on the 29th of this month.
All right, motion by Mr. Skinner for the special meeting for the 29th, 6:00 PM with the school board. Mr. Yakubowski?
Aye.
Mr. McLoughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Skinner?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Dr. Trampy?
Aye.
And Chair's eye. Thank y'all very much. And I will say, I'll say I'm that a boy for the Soapbox Derby also, and the success it's had. Having had two sons that participated in it, it is a thrill to see those, you know, how much time and energy they put into that, and the dedication they show. Also, my son Tyler went to Ohio, didn't do too good once he got there, but he went, so he actually won here when it was at the other location. I like Spotsylvania a lot better. Okay, Mr. Taylor, we're moving on. I think we've got a public hearing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, that is CPA 17-0003, the Comprehensive Plan Amendments Respecting Renewable Energy. Good evening, Wanda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm not so sure about this microphone. This is the second public hearing related to CPA 17-0003, it's a comprehensive plan amendment. The first public hearing was held on April 10th at the Board of Supervisors level, and the meeting went long and the board decided to go ahead and hold a second meeting to ensure that the public had an opportunity to comment on this comprehensive plan amendment. The proposed amendment is related to renewable energy. The comprehensive plan would be amended within two sections of the plan, the introduction and vision, and the land use chapter. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on February 7th, and they continued the vote, they had a couple of questions on the language and whether we should expand one of the provisions. And on March 7th, the Planning Commission did come back and they recommended approval of the original proposal, which is the same as the one before you this evening, and that was a six-zero vote. The specific policies proposed within the introduction and vision chapter, there is a guiding principle related to Spotsylvania County being a business-friendly community and local job creation being a priority. This is actually a little bit more of an expansive policy being added that captures renewable energy as well as some other emerging technologies that we're seeing, encourage innovative land uses such as renewable energy generation, data processing centers, and other industries leveraging technology and fields, including but not limited to information technology, medicine, and logistics. The second item within the introduction and vision is under D, which relates to agriculture and silviculture, being valued components of Spotsylvania County's economy, and that is to encourage complementary land uses such as agrotourism, agribusiness, and renewable energy generation in agricultural and rural areas. So again, this one focuses on renewable energy, but also recognizes the recent, fairly recent trends in agrotourism and agribusiness and the importance of those within the county. So the third policy proposed to be added with this is within the land use chapter, and this one's the most specific, related to renewable energy generation, and this is a land use policy that would be applicable to all land uses. Renewable energy generation facilities such as solar, geothermal, or wind should be sited and designed to minimize detrimental impacts to neighboring properties, uses, and roadways. And there were some comments at the Planning Commission public hearing, some suggestions that detrimental impacts be further defined. That was what the Planning Commission asked us to look at this policy and see if we should list what are detrimental impacts, and beyond the very broad items that we've captured here relating to properties, uses, and roadways. We consulted with legal counsel and talked with it, talked about it among ourselves in planning, and in the end, determined that it was best to leave this more general, because the comprehensive plan is supposed to be general in nature, it contains overarching policies related to land use and the future of the county. This policy relates to not just solar, but potentially geothermal or wind, so it's not just focused in on one use, it's not just focused in on one zoning district. For example, at this point in time, if we had a geothermal plant come in, they would need industrial zoning. So this rather broad policy actually allows us to look at the specific case before us, what is the proposed use, where is it located, what is the character of the surrounding neighborhood or area that it could impact, and determine case by case, what are those detrimental impacts, and how should that property, how should that use, excuse me, be sited and designed in order to minimize those impacts? So as I... So as I mentioned, the code of Virginia is general in nature. This is a policy guide for the county, looking to the future. Generally, it's a, looking as a 20-year term into the future. It can be amended as needed. The value of the amendment is most particularly, I think, related to that land use one. In terms of minimizing detrimental impacts, the board can point to its comprehensive plan in either approving or denying any particular special use application for a solar energy facility or other type of use. To say that the board does not believe that the detrimental impacts have been minimized, could deny it, or could say with some additional conditions, this will minimize its detrimental impacts and therefore we approve it. So really, it provides a policy foundation for a decision that the board makes. The other thing is that as we go through the process, we need to review these cases for what's called 2232, conformance with the comprehensive plan, because it is a public facility in the end. And having some specific language in the comprehensive plan on which to base that determination is important. Otherwise, right now, we would be, we truly would be basing it on extremely general language within the comprehensive plan because we do not consider renewable energy specifically in the plan. So for those reasons, staff is continuing to recommend approval of the amendment as it's proposed. And I'm here for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Skinner?
Thanks, Wanda. Appreciate that. So as we approve these, here's my concern. Not saying it will or won't be, but let's say this S-Power gets their special use permit and goes on. So how do we protect from that point on the growth of solar power? What prevents any company from coming in and saying, "Well, look, you approved this at 36, you know, 3,300 acres" or whatever? And yet, now we want to come in and build on to those phases as we go. How do we protect? Because I, I'm not sure when you say general in nature, okay? Can that hurt us? I mean, where do we, where is the fine line to where we go general in nature to really dictate what we will allow in this county as far as future solar panels and solar work, or windmills, whatever it might be, renewable energy? How do we protect this county against that?
Well, every special use case is looked at individually. Even though a proposal might be right next door to another solar energy facility, it's not going to be the exact same situation. And the county, if the board did want to provide more locational guidance within the comprehensive plan, that's certainly something that could be added on to this amendment in the future, something that the board could direct staff to look into, to come up with some proposals along those lines, to either, you know, limit the total acreage covered ultimately, or some more specific locational guidance. That's something that could be added on to and included in the comprehensive plan.
Well, I really think what you look at, especially out in Livingston District where it is, what we have planned for that and stuff of that nature in the comprehensive plan, and we're now becoming rural, or now we're becoming commercial out that way. I think that's something that this board needs to look at, is how do we actually, I think that's some part of the comprehensive plan, that we're going to accept a percent of solar power in this county, and particularly in Livingston, because it was never identified as a commercial. We've lost a shopping center to Louisa because nobody wanted to put commercial out in that area by Lake Anna. And now we're allowing this to come in, be rezoned, and really it's a commercial power. And my question is, how beneficial really is it not to this county? Okay. So I think that's something that this board, when we do the comprehensive plan, we need to look at that very seriously. And I'm not sure, is that, as long as we have a chance and do it in the near future, I don't want to be caught because, okay, we're changing it because we passed this one now, other people, and they're going to use that against us. Well, wait a minute, you did it for, you know, 1.8 million solar panels. What's 300 more? Or what's another 1,500 kilobytes, or kilowatts, excuse me, or mega, yeah, megawatts, I guess it is. Okay. I don't want to open Pandora's box either. I know it's special, and we do want renewable energy, but we have to control the renewable energy and how much we're going to allow in this county. So when do we do that?
My recommendation would be to approve the comprehensive plan amendment that's before you this evening as a basic foundation, so that we have something in the plan moving forward through the review process for the case we have in right now. But as part of that following on, the board could direct staff to bring back a proposal to address the location, the proximity of solar energy facilities to one another, and/or the coverage within the county, so that you can consider what the options are, and then you could then authorize a new set of public hearings to add those types of policies into the comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yeah, Wanda, I like it vague like this. I think it gives us a lot of teeth. You know, I think the rest is for policy, where we can be specific. And that's, you know, people have mentioned Currituck, North Carolina. Well, that's where we went. Mr. Marshall and I toured along with some of your personnel, excuse me, on a 2,600-acre solar farm down there. We spoke not only to the folks that were putting in the, or finishing up on the solar farm, but also numerous county staff as far as what went on there. And they did do a moratorium at one, I guess they still do, but it wasn't anything that the solar company did. They're actually happy with it. It was to fine-tune their policies. That's what we were told, almost verbatim. If I speak out of turn, Mr. Marshall, please, please catch me. But yeah, their statements to us, it was just to fine-tune some of their policy for these facilities. They even have one directly across from a school. The biggest complaint they've had about that is because it's so visible, the cutting of the grass. You know, they've been letting the grass get high, and they've been getting complaints that it looks trashy. So anyway, but I think, I think there's a good comprehensive amendment to it. I think everything else we can do in policy, as far as specifics for what we're, you know, how close do you want another solar farm to, if approved, if we even approve one, to one another? How much of the landmass in Spotsylvania County, I guess mainly Berkeley and Livingston, would we want to allow for renewable energy? How far into town do you, you know, do you want these facilities? I think a lot of that can be handled at that, at the policy level. So I definitely support this. But I guess I'm probably jumping the gun, probably already hear from the citizens. So if there's no other comments from the board, we're opening up public hearing for the CPA 17-0003, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Renewable Energy. And Nikki, I guess it's to you.
Dave Hammond, followed by Michael O'Beere.
I'm talking for group tonight. We, my name is David Hammond, Livingston District. I appreciate you hearing us tonight. Mr. Mueller sent the board an email, email last Friday, and the Planning Commission, and the staff with our comments. I just want to review them quickly. We've actually already touched on several of the comments already in the discussion, so that's great. And I do appreciate you going to Currituck County and viewing that facility and learning from the experience of others. That's a really key part of this thing. So we do support the changes to the comprehensive plan to address the renewable energy. It is a land, I think primarily a land use issue has been described by Wanda, and I won't reread the parts. I'm going to go through this quickly. We do still think that the detrimental impact aspects should be carefully considered and to provide greater clarity, particularly sizable ones that span, sizable projects that span hundreds of acres. For example, Culpeper has a general statement in their policy that they recently adopted about the size and scale of any renewable energy facility should be strongly considered in order to preserve the county's view shed and character. So we propose the following wording for your consideration. Side, and the size and scale of any renewable energy facility should be strongly considered in order to preserve the county's view shed and character. Detrimental impacts, including but not limited to air, water, soil, noise pollution, wear and tear on roadways and bridges, visual unsightliness, potential harm to individuals and the environment, must be addressed and mitigated before the project may proceed. And further, picking up on the discussion that's already occurred, we'd like to see some further addressing of the land use aspects. For example, some counties either have or are contemplating comprehensive plan or policy changes that would establish minimum distances between one renewable energy facility and another to limit local impacts, especially given the S-Power site will leave a similarly sized agricultural parcels contiguous to that project. And a second part of this is consideration of limiting the total acreage that renewable energy products, projects to a reasonable percentage of Spotsylvania County's jurisdiction. As you know, this single project is 2.5% of our county's land. Several points here for your discussion and consideration, either in the comprehensive plan or in the county code that we feel are important to address. We mentioned the land use. I'll go through, skip that quickly. Appropriate limitations on size and proximity. You know, for example, some jurisdictions are saying that they want to limit maximum acreage to 1,000 acres for a project. Halifax County, for example, has amended their solar ordinance in February to restrict a new solar facility within a five-mile radius of an existing solar facility to 2.5% of the land in that five-mile radius. So they're being specific about how big a project and how close they can be together. And the 2.5% that they just passed was actually a decrease, they had 5% in their original ordinance. We recognize the comprehensive plan as a high-level vision statement, and we encourage to look at the county codes in addition to the comprehensive plan general language. And so lots of questions to consider. We encourage a thoughtful discussion about how this, how large commercial renewable energy generation facilities will become a part of our county in the future. And certainly the S-Power project is just the beginning, so we need to prepare ourselves for changes both in the comprehensive plan and in the county code for this future. So appreciate your time and looking forward to the discussion.
Michael O'Beere.
Michael O'Beere, 11201, Chancemotos Lane. As far as the detrimental impact, I would, I'd like to invite both parties, the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission, to come out to 11201, Chancemotos Lane, and take a look and see what the impact is going to be on Chancemotos Lane. Before any other wording is changed, it needs to be direct to the solar companies, whoever wants to come out in Spotsylvania County, that they cannot come in so close to people's homes. As far as the impact, health and welfare, what is going to be the definition on people's livelihood, their health, and just mental state with all this impact coming in right beside them? You know, there's nothing been there for years. I understand people have a right to sell their property, but we have the right to have a standard of living that we've been used to in Spotsylvania County. This thing is like, like I say, it's less than 50 foot away from my home. During the storms on Monday, the damage to my property and my home was extensive because they cut all the trees right off the line. There's nothing in between the solar field and my home, my well, or my family, except for God, and you know, that's it. There is nothing else there. The trees are gone. The vegetation is not there anymore. The runoff is so bad that, like I say, I've sent y'all pictures. Y'all seen what it did. And nobody's ever come out there and looked to see what could be done, what will be done, or anything from the county, or from S-Power, or from the landowner itself. And I suggest that before detrimental impact is done, y'all need to come out there and take a look at the detrimental impact that has been done so far. Thank you very much.
No one else signed up?
Is there anybody that would like to speak on this public hearing in reference to the renewable energy that did not sign up? Yes, sir?
Dick Janelle, Livingston District. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but as I listened, I felt like there was something I really needed to say. So our recommendation was to add some detail to detrimental impacts. And I understand the nature of the comprehensive plan is general in nature. What troubles me is when I hear other people talking, including members of the board and the Planning Commission, that there are no codes, no county codes that would prevent certain types of activities on land that's zoned in certain ways, agricultural in particular. And my sense is that when the board makes a decision, you own it. And you own all the ramifications from that decision. And so to say that we're not going to put any detail in this, and we don't have a basis in the code to give the detail and the teeth that's needed for enforcement, where you can do uncontrolled burning of what would have been many thousands of tons of debris on a 5,000-acre site right next to a community that has 900 homes and others, fewer homes, but they're right there on the firing line as Michael O'Beere is, I don't think that's responsible. And if you're going to have a comprehensive plan that's so general, then you need to have codes that are very specific and that would look after and be focused on the welfare of the communities that lie right around the area where this thing would be built, whether it's solar or some other business of any sort. My son lives out in California, in LA, and if you want to see zoning gone wrong, you ought to go out there and take a look. The people are crazy out there with the kind of zoning that they're doing. If you want to do a residential community and you are a developer and you buy the land, you've got to set a certain amount of that land aside for business, for employment. And in my son's community, what they did was they set a corner of a piece of property off, and they've got to have somebody come in there, and it looked like it was going to be a fast food company. And the houses around there literally would be less than a stone's throw from this fast food joint, where you'd have all the grease smells and all the other problems with congestion and so forth. I don't think you want that around here either. So when you make a decision about something, in my sense, you own it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that didn't come on for?
Good evening. Once again, my name is Kirsten Talkins-Palding with the National Park Service out of Fredericksburg in Spotsylvania National Military Park. In particular of the, of the potential amendments, particularly the one in the land use chapter number nine, and I think that that's the one that everybody seems to be focusing on. So might I suggest that without changing a lot of language, you'll give yourselves the opportunity to have the teeth, I think the chairman was speaking of, that you want that document to have. In other planning such documents, communities have used appendices that allowed for a little bit more flexibility to give some detail into it, addressing things like limitations on construction areas opened at any one time, to reduce things like erosion and sediment transportation. transportation, nighttime lighting, wetland impacts, transportation planning, visual impacts assessments, transmission system connections and cultural and historic resources, of course, what the park loves. So there are a number of things that you can get into detail with an index like that. And so perhaps, excuse me, not an index, but an appendix, that you might want to reference in that number nine. And that, just by saying you're going to have an appendix, it points anyone that's looking at that comprehensive plan to that heavier language that you're going to want. And then that's what you end up changing as you're going down the line, and you learn that cumulative impacts are things that you want to deal with as you're looking at more and more industry coming to the area. Again, the National Park Service is happy to work with you as you get in with the planning office, and I know that Wanda has been very helpful in the past in connecting and communicating with us, so I just make that offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Does one, I'm sorry, I don't know how appropriate this is, but does one have your contact number?
I believe she does.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Is there anybody else that did not sign? Come on.
Thank you. This is a first for me, so excuse me if I'm not as prepared as I ought to be, because I really hadn't planned to speak. But I am the owner, my brothers and I are the owner of a lot of that land that's adjacent to, all the land that's adjacent to Mr. O'Beere.
And your name, sir, is?
My name's Dave Meadows.
Thank you.
And we have timbered it. It's past due for timbering. We would have timbered the land whether we're selling it or not selling the land, it needed to be timbered. That was a recommendation from the professionals from the state that we timbered the land a couple of years ago, so we finally got around to that. And I'm sure that they don't appreciate that. I don't think I'd like it if I were a next door neighbor. Timbering's not pretty. I don't know if any of you've noticed or not, but it's not real pretty when they come in and timber. But I would also say that the land through there, the vast majority of that land is, nobody's been back in there except for a few people who hunt, and me, and my family. And there's literally just dirt roads, there are logging roads and trails, there's no highways through there. The closest one is Chancellor Meadows. You also have Fawn Lake. Hey, we were there a long time before Fawn Lake. We were there a long time before Chancellor Meadows. We've been in here over 50 years in the county. And I think that we should have some right to use our land the way we feel like it's best. And we feel like it's best this way because this is a renewable energy source, and it's going to be in my back door just as much as it is in their back door. But I think that we, as caretakers of our country, of our county, of our state, need to do what's right. And the right thing is renewable energy, even if we don't think it's the prettiest thing in the world. And I have confidence, and I have talked to the people at S-Power multiple times, I have confidence that they're going to do what's right with the neighbors, that they're going to build barriers so that you will not see as much of this as you think you're going to be seeing, and that they will have set offs to the side. And they've even, you know, asked me specifically, you know, what do you, what's your expectation? I said, now I want the neighbors to have barriers so that they don't have it in there too. So I, I have confidence in the company that they're going to do a good job, and I appreciate you all listening to everybody and hope you make good decisions that's good for Spotsylvania County and all the citizens here. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that did not sign up that wishes to speak at this time for this public hearing? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions to Wanda?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Hey, it was a good, I'm glad the Park Service showed up. I'm going to put you on the spot right now. I'm glad you said you want to work with the board, because there's a great opportunity, whether this project moves forward or doesn't move forward. You know, we've, for the longest time, we've had a problem with Brock and Orange Plank Road, where there's a horrible intersection, traffic problems, safety problems, and just a mess in general. Either way, I think, since you said you're willing to work with us, I think there's a great opportunity now to work with VDOT, to go ahead and put a traffic circle there to improve traffic, improve the whole experience of the park. So based on what you said, are you guys ready to work with us to try to move forward on something like that, to improve safety and traffic?
I don't know if this is the time for...
Just getting, I'm just, yeah.
Absolutely, sir. I'm happy to have the question. I would point you to a 2008 MOA that was done based on the radio tower.
Sure.
That is very specific to that corner, and I think we'll want to spend some time looking at that.
No, no, I agree with you. I saw that, that study today, and I think that's a great opportunity to work with the Park Service, and not just say no.
That's right.
Because so, so often, from the Park Service, you know, we try to make a change on something, no. So I think there's a great opportunity to working group together, revisit that MOA, potentially help the overall Spotsylvania County.
I don't believe that there's any...
All right, we're, we're off the public hearing here.
I agree. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Look forward to working with you.
We're right, we're outside of what we're supposed to be doing here. Any other comments? Dr. Trampi.
My question is really more of a zoning code question rather than comprehensive plan, but maybe you can answer it anyway. Are there any zoning classifications where you can build a renewable, any kind of energy generation facility by right?
No. Not of, not of the type that we've been discussing, you know, the wind farm, or, or the geothermal, or the, the solar facility, solar energy facility. You can install, you know, smaller scale solar as an accessory use.
Right.
And that's permissible, but, but not what we're talking about at the scale.
And which ones can you do with an SUP?
For the solar energy facility, it's agricultural two, agricultural three, and rural zoning.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Cole, go ahead.
Yeah, there seems to be a little bit of confusion here. I think this comprehensive plan amendment is getting confused with an SUP application that is currently pending. I just want to clarify, Wanda, if you'd help out, that this is not related to an SUP application. This is a comprehensive plan amendment and, and not, you know, specific to any, any application or, or pending application. Is that correct?
That's correct. If the board chooses to approve the comprehensive plan amendment before you this evening, it does not grant any sort of approvals to the pending application. It, it is a policy document that will guide the board as you continue to review those special use permit applications.
I'm a couple of comments. I like the, I'm a trust staff, and I'm a trust our council and their suggestions for this comprehensive plan. I like it being vague like this. I think it gives us a lot of teeth. And the differentiation to, the SUP in itself gives us a lot of teeth. We can require a lot of stuff, the burning, the, all these things that have been mentioned. Number one, we're not giving, you're not giving county staff, these issues are already being worked on. We're in negotiations, we're in, in the trenches working with this, and you're not giving us the, any breathing room to try to work through these issues and get something out there that y'all can review. And that said, and Wanda, if I misspeak, just please raise up the whole sign, you know, hold on there, Mr. Bennett sign. But anyway, you know, our SOP, these are two different items, like Mr. Cole was saying. And I want that comprehensive plan very vague, giving us the teeth that we need to deny it pretty much for almost any reason, to be quite honest. I like it the way it is. And again, I'm a trust council, I'm a trust staff that has put this together. I would ask that, I know Mr. Mueller, and I know the park, military park service, I'm probably mutilating that. I hope y'all get, Patrick, I hope you get with them and review some of Mr. Mueller's stuff too. I did like some of the stuff in his, his information, but it's more policy specific than it is comprehensive plan, for sure. You know, I think folks that, you know, and I'm probably going to mutilate this too. This is the Fawn Lake, the organization, I think it's Spotsylvania for, Concerned Citizens in Spotsylvania and Fawn Lake. They're getting, is there more to it? I knew I'd get it wrong, but thank you. Y'all have done a terrific job putting together questions and concerns that you have, really, y'all have, and I've said this before publicly, and I'll say it again, I thought this was going to be an easy, easy decision for myself. You know, no roads, no schools, no fire, no rescue. But boy, I'll tell you what, after the first meeting they, S-Power put together for a community meeting, that was quickly put to rest that this was going to be an extensive and exhaustive, probably one of the hardest projects that I've ever been in, well, I won't even say I'm involved in it, but as far as trying to educate myself on and getting the factual data that I need to make a knowledgeable and informed decision. Y'all have done a terrific job. I commend you for that. And I won't mention names, but the other citizen's coming forward, I mean, he's put together photos of distances, and, I mean, just did a fantastic job that really visually lets you see the effects of this. So with all this blabbering I've done, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this comprehensive plan amendment for renewable energy.
Mr. Chair, discussion, please.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I think Wanda just said it, and I will, I will support this motion, but Wanda brought up a very good point, and the word she used, it's a guide. Okay? And so, you know, let's define what a guide is too, because it can go from just a general guide, which we're looking at right now, or a guide that's going to give us truly a way that we want this county to go with. Okay? And that's what my concern is. I think this is, this is general, as long as we have the capability of building that guide along the way, then, then I can support this, Wanda, because you said it yourself, it's a guide. Well, I don't want just a loose guide. I want something that this county is working towards and trying to stick within those guidelines so it benefits the entire county too. Thank you.
I'll just say, again, I have the same, living out there, and at least as a crow flies, being in close proximity to it, and run up and down that road for many, many years, you know, I, I do take this at a personal level, what's, you know, what comes into our community and how it's going to affect us, how it's going to look. But that's it.
Any other comments or discussion for the board?
A motion by my, from, by myself for the approval of this amendment. Mr. Akabaski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
And Chair's aye. Thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda. Next up, Ms. Chairman, our report on revisions to an adoption of the FY 2019 to 2023 Capital Improvement Plan. Good evening, Bonnie and Mary.
Y'all looking refreshed, somewhat. The floor is yours.
May I have the floor computer, please? Thank you. So tonight, we're coming back to you with a revised fiscal year 19 through fiscal 2023 CIP, because when we brought this to you on April 12th, the motion to approve failed. Also, since that date, we have received additional information impacting projects, primarily transportation projects in the CIP, and those have been revised in what you're going to see tonight. What's on the screen here is the CIP that was presented to you for approval in, on April 12th, and all that's showing here obviously are the broad categories. Overall, that's five-year CIP was $375.3 million. The specific revisions that have been made were outlined in your packet and are also summarized here. The general government adjustments that have been made were made to be entirely consistent with the fiscal year 19 budget that's already been approved, and those are removal of the replacement county admin vehicle from fiscal year 19, from fiscal year 19's budget that was actually already replaced in fiscal year 18, so no need to replace that in fiscal year 19. Addition of the purchase of three vehicles for the new school resource officers that were approved for fiscal year 19. Those we budgeted initially in the general fund budget, those actually need to be funded in the capital projects fund budget, which is reflective of the adjustments in the CIP here tonight. We also, as we did in the fiscal year 19, general fund and capital projects budget, we have added to the CIP the grant funded portion of the text to 911 project. And then, specific to transportation, we received some additional information from VDOT relative to a couple of projects. VDOT has informed staff that the county will not receive the revenue sharing funding we applied for towards the roundabout at Old Plank Road and at Andorra Drive. Absent a source of matching funding for this project in fiscal year 19, staff is suggesting that we shift the project out by two years, picking it up, shifting it out two years, and apply for the next round of revenue sharing two years from now. That is the soonest that we would be able to apply for additional revenue sharing. Since this action reduces fiscal year 19's debt service, there is a budget adjustment in your packet tonight that reflects that adjustment to debt service, and we will need, if you choose to adopt this CIP, we will also need your separate adoption on that included budget adjustment. And Mr. McLaughlin is aware of this, of this shift in funding, as is the rest of the Transportation Committee. We talked about this at the, at the last Transportation Committee meeting.
Mr. Skinner. Okay, could you review once again for me? I apologize, I'm sure I was there, but we removed the Lansdowne Route 2 right turn lane from fiscal year 2019 for what?
Yes.
I, I...
Yes. Yes. That, that project was originally in fiscal year 19. And was approved in the budget as fiscal year 19. Originally, if you'll recall, Spotsylvania and Fredericksburg were going to share in intersection improvements there at that intersection. Fredericksburg was going to apply for revenue sharing for their portion of that project. They did not do that, so there is not enough money jointly to make those improvements. Please do recall that the Transportation Committee talked about a regional project being submitted by FAMPO for smart scale funding for improvements in the Route 2 and Route 17 corridor study to include the Lansdowne intersection.
I got to be honest with you, when we did discuss this, I said that Route 2 and Lansdowne could not go out six, seven, eight years. There's no way we can keep that road the way it is for, in, in doing smart scale. Again, gentlemen, I'm, you know, I know you're all sitting there and everything, but I understood that they didn't go for revenue sharing city of Fredericksburg. Okay? But I also thought that we were going to do it from FAMPO money or something of that nature is what, what you brought up, Tim, is that correct?
Well, I think we discussed the other day that we would move that out to the next year and apply for money through either a regional project or the next round.
But it wasn't going to come under smart scale. It would be the revenue sharing...
I think it was part of an overall larger smart scale project that'd be applied for regionally.
Correct.
It's a joint, we had those multiple options were given to us.
Well, I understand that, but, you know, realistically, there are certain projects in this county that can't wait six, seven, eight years. That'll help traffic flow and everything. And I thought it was my understanding, if we pushed it out from 19, then we'd go after it the next year with either revenue sharing, and we can't, you can't put this project in, in a, in smart scale. It, it's not feasible, it's, it's not doable.
But I think it was part of a ma, a larger overall project to fix, because that's just the right turn lane onto, to.
Understand.
But the larger project would have been a smart scale.
I understand, but if it's part of the larger scale, and it's part of smart scale, that means we're not going to see it funding for six to, and complete it for eight years. And that was not my understanding.
If I may.
And I, I've brought this up a couple of times. I've said that this can't go under smart scale.
You did bring this up several times. And...
And the biggest hurdle we have is that property is not located in Spotsylvania County. It is located in the city of Fredericksburg. So that's why we could not apply for funding when we went forward. I had talked with the city of Fredericksburg to try to get them to do revenue-share funding, and they wanted to wait for our corridor studies. Our corridor studies are almost completed right now. We've had a wrap-up on the Transportation Committee, and we had proposed to do a joint application with the city of Fredericksburg. The city of Fredericksburg now is working with the corridor studies. They have proposed a application with smart scale from Dixon Street that incorporates Lansdowne Road, and from the Transportation Committee meeting, we will pick up where the Lansdowne Road intersection begins into Spotsylvania County, and our project that was approved by the motions by Mr. Skinner and seconded by Mr. Ross at the Transportation Committee was to apply for that as far as we could get close, working towards Benchmark Road. So we will have an application coming forward with smart scale this round, not out-years, but we do have the ability to work that with the city of Fredericksburg, and they have agreed to make application of smart scale this round as well to capture the Lansdowne Road intersection, because it is not within Spotsylvania County.
If I could, just to clarify, Doug, the smart-scale application that you're speaking of is going to be submitted by Spotsylvania County, correct?
It's two, it's two different applications, you're correct. We, we will have an application that will begin on the other side of Lansdowne Road in Spotsylvania County. The beginning, Fredericksburg, the city of Fredericksburg is applying for Dixon Street all the way up and including Lansdowne, so they're applying for a separate application as well.
Right. Because the, I attended the FAMPO meeting last night. FAMPO, we approved the four, yeah, four, resolution was approved, the four projects, because each, each group gets four projects that we can submit, our counties can get four we can submit.
Correct.
Lansdowne Road project was not one of the four that was approved by FAMPO, so.
They're regional projects, so our, our proposal was to go, and that was discussed with FAMPO, we had five projects, we have four slots. So at the Transportation Committee meeting, we wanted to be prepared to be aggressive and apply for all of our spots. So our, our goal was, we had four spots, Germana Point Connection, the Harrison Road Extension, Route 2 and 17, and then the on-ramp of I-95 at 126. So, and then the fifth one was the Route 208 and Lafayette Boulevard improvement. So we worked on these five projects at the Transportation Committee meeting and said, let's go forward with five projects. I'm going to work with FAMPO and try to get FAMPO to do a regional project that incorporated with the city of Fredericksburg and see if FAMPO would make that a regional project. FAMPO said, you know what, the city of Fredericksburg is going to go forward with the project, you guys should go forward with the project, we're going to go ahead and move forward with the STAR Study project that is Exit 126. Still giving us four, still giving us really five, because the Exit 126, so really, Spotsylvania County's got.
I understand where you're coming from.
I don't want to say that out loud in case, you know, but we're still getting all of our applications, and it's still working out that we're moving forward with what was our goal. So yes, the Route 2 and 17 corridor studies, we went over last Thursday at the Transportation Committee meeting, and those are where we derived those projects from and nailed those down last week. We'll be coming forward at a later date to the board. Thank you.
Mr. Skinner. Okay, Doug, now that you've said all that, when can I expect to see some project work done in the very earliest on Lansdowne Road and Route 2?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Well, Gary, first, those, those, but the projects have to come before the board for approval. So you're asking a question, and maybe I'm wrong here, let me, let me know, that the board needs to approve as our smart-scale projects. I mean, it's, you're, you're asking him to give an answer to something that the board needs to.
No, I'm not doing that at all, David.
Okay.
I'm not. What I'm asking is, this has gone on long enough. To be honest, we've pushed it back, we've pushed it, and we use the excuse that Lansdowne Road belongs to Fredericksburg at that point where we need the help. Now, do I have to go over? I'll be happy to go to their board and look at it and say, look, guys, this is serious. This doesn't only affect you, your land, but it affects all the people on Lansdowne Road over in that district. It's been known that it's one of the worst intersections that we've got in this county right now. Backs it up two miles. Now, I understand the smart scale that we're talking about, and I accepted that, because, you know, from Benchmark Road all the way to Lansdowne Road, we can increase the traffic flow by changing the lanes, it doesn't have to be a four-lane highway. But at our intersections, we can make the flow go quicker, so the backup isn't as long as it is. But right now, I see no future for that intersection, and, you know, all of a sudden, it's changed that we're working with FAMPO, there's got to be money out there. It's no more than, what, a million and a half, two million at the very max to fix that intersection? Why can't we get with Fredericksburg, if we have to do it, and go and say, look, why can't we fix this problem? Because that's what partnership is about. And sit in this thing, right now, Doug, you can't tell me I'll see anything for eight years under what's planned right now. Is there something I'm missing?
No.
Thank you. And that's wrong. And that's not my understanding after that committee. So I'm, never mind. I think is, we need to do something. If we've got a problem out there, we need to fix it. And we have fixed it in all the areas. We're talking about a roundabout, we're talking about bumpouts and everything else, and I support them because they're needed, because of flow of traffic. But this corner is just as important as any one of those other intersection of bumpouts or the roundabout, if not maybe more important.
I think.
And I think we need to do something about it, instead of just pushing it down the road.
Any other comments from the board? Discussion back in here. Thank you, Doug.
The other change that was talked about and advocated for, approved by the Transportation Committee, was the third item that's on here, which was to add a roundabout at Old Plank and Chancellor. A proffer exists for a developer to make certain improvements at that intersection already. VDOT has reviewed those improvements and determined that a roundabout would be a better solution than the originally proffered turn lanes. After discussions with the developer, with VDOT, and with the Transportation Committee, Mr. McLaughlin requests that a million dollars be added to the CIP in fiscal year 19 to allow for the expansion of the developer's proffered improvements to result in a roundabout at that Old Plank and Chancellor intersection. And then finally, the only adjustments that were made to the schools' projects were really just to adjust our CIP to match the final CIP that was adopted by the school board on April 16th. Those were very minor changes and changing in between their CIP categories, but overall, their bottom line for the five years remained consistent with what was presented to you in April. So in summary, the.
Hold on, Bonnie.
Bonnie, just real quick, the, basically what we're doing with the roundabouts is the Andorra Roundabout is not happening, we're pushing it back two years, so the money, the one million dollars for the roundabout at Old Plank and Chancellor, is that coming from the money that was appropriated for the Andorra Roundabout?
It is not. The Andor, Old Plank Andorra Roundabout in fiscal year 19 was $600,000, followed by another $900,000 two years thereafter. We've picked up that whole project, shifted it out two years. So then we remove the million dollars for the right turn lane at Lansdowne onto Route 2, and that million dollars was then plugged into the roundabout at Old Plank and Chancellor.
Okay, thank you.
So based on making only those changes that I just noted, this would be the summarized new CIP. There are very little overall changes, there are none beyond those that I just went through. And so our staff recommendations are two. One is to approve the CIP with the revisions that I just noted. There's a resolution included in your board packet that is consistent with the figures that are here, and then also to approve the budget adjustment that's in your packet that affects the fiscal year 19 budget.
Motion or more discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chair. I would recommend a, a motion and a vote on each of those things, so it'd be the CIP and then the second for the, for the budget.
All right. We need a motion to approve the CIP as revised.
Motion to approve the revised CIP.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Trampy.
I offer a perfecting amendment to remove the project of Fire Station 12 and shift the money to the new building for Fire Company 3. And I think, as most of you have heard me say before, our county's not growing geographically. As we, when, when our response time is not what we'd like, it's not because there's no fire station nearby, it's because the crew at that station is out on another call. As we grow our population, we're going to need more crews, but we have room in existing fire stations for those crews. I think we should fill the ones we have first before we build more stations which can accommodate more than one crew while only putting one crew in each one. And I think the, the new building for Company 3 is a, is a higher priority at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, I think you have something to say.
Yeah, just to add to that real quick. I would, I would highly agree that as we move forward with some different staffing arrangements, that we should probably look at the replacement of Company 3 before we look at the addition of Company 12. However, I would say that we probably still need to keep Company 12 kind of in the plans, possibly just switching the timelines for those to, Mr., Mr., Dr. Trampy, your, your assessment of the space that exists in the current stations is, is exactly on par. There, there are just additional apparatus, additional spaces that we can provide additional staff for. However, that, that area of Route 1 does cause some concern for me, just for the distances from the existing stations. So my only concern is some of the, the growth that is slated to occur in that immediate area would then exceed our response time goals, even, even if those units are staffed in the surrounding stations. So I, I think it still is a need there for that. I think the replacement of Company 3 is a, a higher priority at this point as we look at the entire system. But I think down the road, we, we definitely still need to make sure that we, we plan for filling that kind of hole in between Company 1, 4, 11, and 8, just as, as Route 1 continues to expand that way.
Thank you, Chief.
Now I'm being tested on how to, any other comment from the board?
I have comments, but I don't know how we work in the motion.
That's what I was going to test myself on.
I'll, I'll wait, but I do have comments.
All right. You want to go ahead and make your comments?
Just to clarify, the, the motion that is before the board is Mr. Trampy's motion, which is to remove Fire Station 12, so now would be the appropriate time to discuss the motion, which is to approve the CIP with the removal of Fire Station 12, and that will either be voted up or down.
My motion would not approve the CIP, would amend, it would amend Mr. McLaughlin's motion to make this change, then we would still have to vote on Mr. McLaughlin's motion to approve the CIP.
It depends on however you phrase it. So you can certainly move to, to amend it, or you can move to, to amend and approve as amended. So however you would prefer to do it.
Because I created perfecting amendments, and this is what I had in mind.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
Cleaner vote would be for Mr. McLaughlin to withdraw his motion, and then Dr. Trampy make a motion to amend the comprehensive, or the CIP, and then you would, could approve the amended CIP.
We can do it either way, apparently. If you like, that perfecting does have a good ring to it, so if you want to, if we want to keep that and just vote twice, that's fine with me. Let's vote, we'll vote twice. Mr. Jakubowski, you have a comment?
I have a comment on the revised CIP.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The revised CIP that's put before us with the transportation component, I still will refuse to support. The voters of this county, the voters of my district, the majority of the voters in this county, voted for a bond referendum with specific projects that were listed in there, and these are not in there. These are millions of dollars that are jumping ahead, taking up debt space, taking up time, energy, Mr. Skinner said it very well. Lansdowne Road is a priority that we had identified. Now, if you want to continue to sit there and throw millions of dollars and more millions of dollars onto our debt load without any way to pay for it, as I will remind the board that we have roughly $2.6 million in transportation debt that's coming due in about four budget cycles, with no way to pay for that, except to keep throwing more on top. The voters said that they wanted these projects done, and to put things ahead of it is absolutely wrong. I refuse to support it, and I will not support it.
Any other comment? Seeing none? All right, we're going to test my skills here. We have a perfected amendment by Dr. Trampy to take out Station 12 tentatively, add Station 3. So we'll vote on that first.
Let me just make sure I understand. Mr. Dr. Trampy, are you?
We're just removing it.
Are you asking to remove Company 12 or simply switching the order of them?
For FY 2019, shifting the Station 12 money to Station 3.
And then for the out-years?
If, if the chief thinks switching the order is the way to go, then, then I will change my motion to do that.
That would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Skinner.
And Bonnie. So under this motion, we are going to accept the CIP. Is this it? Part of this? No, is that the next motion? Okay, so this is a motion just to add what Mr. Dr. Trampy said.
To switch the two, the order of the two stations.
Thank you. Okay, understand. Thank you.
All right. Again, we have an effecting amendment by Dr. Trampy. We're switching Station 12 and 3, basically. So 3 is going to be the priority, 12 will be in the out-years. Mr. Jakubowski.
No.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampy.
Aye.
And Chair's aye. All right, now we have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin to approve the revised CIP as presented by Bonnie. Mr. Jakubowski.
I do have a question.
All right, go ahead.
One, one item that I forgot to ask of staff was, the proffer that was given to us was for the rezoning that was done of the, I forget, Thornburn Farm a few years ago. During that process, that proffer that was given to us, the fix at Chancellor and Old Plank was run by VDOT, correct? Did VDOT approve that? Did they, they had, we didn't just come up with it on our own. I'm sure we asked VDOT if this was the appropriate way to spend proffered dollars.
I believe that the, the applicant came forward with the $970,000 improvements as a cash proffer or to add turn lanes. VDOT did agree at that time that those were acceptable. I believe that with conversations and how that has transpired, that the applicant who is developing Thornburn Estates said that, you know, he wouldn't mind putting in a roundabout there if that was a better alternative, and he had worked through VDOT, and VDOT said that would be a much better alternative for traffic movement in that area.
Well, my, my question is, why is it that we go through a rezoning, we go through proffers, and then it takes a couple of years later that we come up with an actual solution? That, to me, just seems quite ridiculous. I, I'm, you know, this is VDOT with their, apparently, they just found out about traffic circles, and they're putting them everywhere. And have they done a study? Have they done a study at Andorra Drive? And then my, my last question is, where is the extra million dollars coming from to go on top of the proffer that we are going to be using to fix that intersection?
Bonnie can answer that question, but yes, there was a study done, and, and as part of that rezoning, and I don't know the exact year off the top of my head, but it certainly wasn't just last two, three, four years, it was several years ago for that rezoning, and they did not move forward with the development. I believe it was other property owners, and then it had changed hands, so that, that was some time ago, and things develop, and additional traffic does move into the area. So as we know, the more studies we do and we don't act on them, those studies become stagnant, and then they become obsolete. So it does take a different approach and a different mechanism to make sure that we're capturing that backflow of traffic as well as the new traffic.
Wait, are, are you telling me that we voted on this rezoning several years ago? Because I remember it was three years at the most.
There was a proffer amendment that came in to try to eliminate that, and I'm, I'm talking off the top of my head.
Okay.
But the rezoning was done. But the rezoning was done under different property owners, and I believe the original attorney was Clark Lemming, and I believe it changed hands, and Chris Stacy bought the property, and I don't know when he purchased the property, but that is when the new proffer amendment came in, but that property was already rezoned. That proffer was already in, in, in existence, and he was trying to eliminate that proffer, I believe, because now the new proffer policy, Thornburn Estates is maybe two miles from this intersection. So a new proffer policy that, as it exists now, is, is not in direct relation to that intersection, and he thought that maybe he could just eliminate it altogether, and the board said, no, we're not gonna move in that direction, I believe, if, and I'm trying to remember everything off the top of my head.
No, no, I, I appreciate that, thank, thank you.
And then the additional funds that was discussed at the Transportation Committee meeting to cover those additional costs, it's being worked with, with SDI engineers and Virginia Department of Transportation, and that million dollars was transferred from, I think it was, it wasn't quite a million.
That million dollars would be a new bond issue this summer.
So an additional bond issuance to pay for another project that wasn't in the bond. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. McLaughlin to approve the CIP as revised.
Please.
Mr. Skinner.
No, I'm very serious, I mean, look, I've been on this board eleven years, and I've supported Route Three, it was a shovel-ready project when we first started, we put everything into that side. Now, I have, I have asked this for, I can't tell you how many years that we've worked in trying to get Lansdown and Two, my understanding was at that last committee meeting, we had support to get this done one way or the other, that we could do it. Right now, it doesn't look like I have any support whatsoever to get this done. I mean, Doug, you told me maybe eight years if I'm lucky, if I start through the smart scale system now. You know, I gotta have support, to be very honest with you, I gotta have support.
Mr. Chair. Because at, at the meeting, Mr. Skinner, and you agreed to support this project and move forward because the project on Lansdown Road is not in the county, so we can't just buy, you know, we, we don't have the authority to do that roadwork in the city of Fredericksburg, and we agreed that I would support the future development once it's available, whether it's a joint project with the city and the county, that I would support that whether it's next year or the next year, whenever we can line up that project, but I don't think we can execute that project in the city.
We can work with the city to make this happen, okay?
Yeah, yeah, but they're not ready, I, I agree, but they're not ready to do it this year. I think that was the issue, that they're gonna focus other priorities.
The issue was, they didn't wanna do it.
John, let's have some decorum and have.
I, I, I agree, Gary, I, I support the project, but it's not ready to go in fiscal year nineteen, and that's what we agreed upon at the Transportation Meeting, that I would support you in a future time when it's ready.
Well, let me make this clear, supporting me isn't just staying back until Fredericksburg is ready to do it. It's, it is, it's all working with Frederick, you on the FAMPO board and with Fredericksburg could bring this up and do that, I mean, that is your job on the FAMPO to bring this up.
And I, and I agree, that was part of one of the discussions that we'd bring up as a smart scale initiative, and any other way that we can do it, but I agree with you, Gary, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, I agree.
Well, if you agree with me, how about we do something with FAMPO and put it in front of FAMPO, because this is ridiculous. This is, this is a safety issue, and, and if they don't wanna stand up for it, then let's make it an issue with the thing, because I'm willing to come.
All right, Mr. Skinner, I agree. Could we propose that to bring up to the next FAMPO meeting, that we can bring it up to the board, and address it and find out if there's a possible way to fund the project?
Okay, I remind you two that this was started out, and the excuse was, well, we can't approve something until we get the study done, and now the study is, how old? Going on two years? Pretty close to it, Doug? Because it delayed and delayed, every time we add something to it, we delayed it and had to start all over. So I don't know who we're working with, because I know in the contract business, if we have to add something to a contract, they don't start all over and do a rebid for it. I don't know how we're doing it out here, but we need to take care of this subject, this problem, and take care of it now, because I do not plan. I will support it because I said I would, but I'm not gonna support anything else until I start seeing some action on our roads over on our side of the district.
Any other comments? Motion by Mr. McLaughlin to approve the CIP as revised. Mr. Jakobowski.
No.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
Chair's aye.
The next item we need your approval of is the budget amendment associated with the changes that we talked about this evening. That budget amendment was in your packet for tonight's meeting. The budget amendment overall increases total revenue by $52,500 and expenditures by $52,500, and that is largely the result of adding the three SRO vehicles to the budget.
Motion.
Mr. Marshall.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented, any discussion? All right, Mr. Jakobowski.
Aye.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Ross.
Aye.
Mr. Skinner.
Aye.
Mr. Marshall.
Aye.
Dr. Trampi.
Aye.
Chair's aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies, very much.
Mr. Taylor.
That brings us to the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors Joint Work Session to discuss the 2018 update to the county's comprehensive plan.
Before we go into that, can we take like a five-minute break? You want five? Just five.